We're ready.
Okay. I'm going to call the meeting, the Kensington, Town of Kensington, Town Council Meeting to order for Monday, September 13th. Welcome, everyone. I am Mayor Tracy Furman and we're going to get ready to start the meeting. Our first item on the agenda is the moment of silence. I want to bring two things to people's attention before we have that. I want to congratulate Councilmember Bridget Hill-Zayet, her husband Salem, and their son Colin on the birth of Maya. We have a new baby in the town and Maya was born on September 7th. So we want to welcome her into our community. So Bridget will not be here this evening. She has the okay to take off for this meeting and hopefully she'll be back in the October meeting or definitely by November. So just want to let everyone know. The other item that I would like to bring to people's attention, that longtime Frederick Place resident Howard Collodney passed away. And Dr. Campbell, who was his neighbor, wanted to say a few words about Mr. Collodney. Joe?
Thanks, Mayor Furman. Yes, I've asked for a few moments to speak about the passing of Howard Collodney. He was a good friend, a good neighbor. He and his widow Elaine have lived in Kensington for more than 50 years. And Howard was a retired lawyer. He was an engaging raccoon tour. He was a decided cinephile and a lover of canines. And he played racquetball until late in his life. So thank you, Mayor Furman. Howard Collodney is going to be missed.
Thank you. Thank you for those words. It's nice that someone who knows the person who gives a little background on them. So yes, and our condolences go out to his wife Elaine. So is there anyone else that we should be remembering this evening? No? Okay. And thank you, Jack, for letting me know about Howard's passing. I appreciate that. He always keeps me up to date on these things and I do appreciate it. So thank you, Jeff. Okay, if we could just bow our heads for a moment of silence? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. Council, you were sent the minutes for the Town Council Meeting on July 12th, the Town Council Work Session on July 19th, and the Town Council Meeting on August 9th, and the Town Council Work Session Meeting Minutes on August 30th. I believe anyone who had some corrections have already sent those in. Are there any other changes that you want to make? I'm not hearing any.
Can we approve them en masse or individually? I lost your voice.
Sorry, I was coughing. Let's just do them individually. I think that probably be safer. So could I get a motion to approve the council, Town Council Meeting Minutes for July 12th?
I'll move to approve the Council Meeting Minutes of July 12th.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the Town Council Work Session Meeting Minutes for July 19th?
I'll move that we...
Go ahead. Your do the honors, Connor.
I'll move that we approve the meeting minutes from the Town Council Work Session of July 19th, 2021.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the Town Council Work Session Meeting Minutes on August 30th?
Yes, I will move to approve the Town Council Meeting Minutes on August, from August 30th.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. We are going to pull the closed session meetings for the July 19th and August 30th, and we'll bring those back since Bridget's not here. She hasn't had an opportunity to look at packets. So we will bring those back in October if she's here.
Thank you, missed August 9th.
Yep, agreed. I moved that we approved the meeting minutes from the Town Council Meeting of August 9th.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Sorry, I thought I'd done four. Oh, okay. All right, very good. All right, well, let's move down to the mayor and Town Council. Okay, so we, Matt, do you want to just, we're acknowledging that we did meet in a closed session on August 30th in accordance with Section 3-305, be seven of the general provisions articles to consult with our council to obtain legal advice. So this is just an acknowledgement that we did meet in a closed session. Okay, number two, Summit Avenue Sidewalk Improvements Proposed. Nate, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, thanks, Tracy. So just for a little background, the Montgomery County Department of Transportation put out a notice to residents along Summit Avenue between Knowles and Prospect on the east side, so members of residents of this town about improvements that they wanted to make to the sidewalk, basically to improve pedestrian safety and also make it more accessible for folks with disabilities. So the impetus for this was, you know, there had been some, there had been, there was a child that was hit around Brookfield a couple of years ago. And I think the initial request came out of that in meetings with the town and with the county. And finally, we're now here where they're proposing what the improvements would be. So essentially, what they would do, what they're proposing to do is to take in their right of way to the east of where the sidewalk is now into where some of the residents, you know, perceived yards are. But it is a county right of way. They would take some of the property back and put that into either, basically add four, excuse me, add two feet of sidewalk to make it a six-foot wide sidewalk. And then also a zero, depending on the width of what they would take, anywhere from zero to three feet of separated buffer, a grass buffer. Now, this would result in several trees being removed. And, you know, there were some concerns expressed from some of the residents there about the improvements and what, you know, what Matt and Tracy and I did two Saturdays ago was organize a meeting with some of the residents there. We invited all the residents along that stretch and then also along the stretch south of Prospect. And then for a couple houses up Prospect, that could be a little more immediately affected, but not directly affected by the improvements. And we gathered feedback from them on what, you know, what some of their concerns were, what things they liked about the project. And, I mean, essentially, what, you know, what was determined was that they felt that the area between Prospect and Brookfield was already quite safe because of the fact that there's already a park, the second lane serves as a parking lane there for all hours except for 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. on weekdays. So they felt like it was quite buffered. They are concerned about some of their, you know, that land being taken and, you know, basically some of the right of ways go, some of the right of ways go very far back, even, you know, would end up resulting in eliminating some of the driveways probably altogether, as well as there were concerns about the trees being removed and what that would do for some of those older trees. Now, we, what we did was we kind of digested that and then met and shared those concerns with Montgomery County Department of Transportation in a working meeting last week just to see if some of the proposed potential solutions would be workable from them. Essentially, what we said was, can we, is there a way to, is there a way to basically close off that second lane permanently and make it a permanent parking lane like it is all along the rest of Summit on that side, all the way basically down to Beach Drive? And then in so doing, eliminate the need to really extend any sidewalk improvements there. Maybe extended a foot and a half to go into the parking lane now where there is a bit of extra room. But to make sure that any improvements north of, north of Brookfield, between Brookfield and Knowles, where the Housing and Opportunities Commission property is, that that should be absolutely prioritized because there is no buffer whatsoever there and there's room to maximize the pedestrian safety improvements. We had a couple of other recommendations or suggestions or ideas that we floated past them, including to make sure that, you know, if that were to happen, that, you know, we would, we notified them that we would post or be willing to post or we have the desire to post a no cut-through traffic on Prospect through to Knowles or Connecticut during the evening hours, which we would obviously discuss in the Traffic Committee, but that we would, we would put the sign up now to also extend to the afternoon hours. Right now, it's only during the morning hours. And we would also work to make sure that enforcement was increased on that. One other recommendation we made was, since they're going to be doing this along that stretch, that the Maryland, excuse me, the Montgomery County Bicycling Master Plan calls for a separated bike lane along Summit Avenue on the west side, so the opposite side, not in the town, not the town side, but the side that goes along Kensington Estates and Parkwood. That we had suggested since this was going to happen to look into and evaluate whether they could add that, start to add that bike lane there as the first section of bike lane that is intended to extend all the way down to Beach Drive and connect with the Capitol, basically the Capitol Trail Network. So we shared those, the ideas and the feedback. And basically, what we were told from the county was that, you know, there's permanently marking that parking lane as a, you know, taking that out of a second lane for driving from 4:00 to 6:00 and making it permanently parking was not tenable to them. I mean, at least that's what they expressed over the call, mainly because it's an operational issue that would have, in their view, ripple effects for the whole transportation network in that section. So they also, you know, we, but in that conversation with them, we emphasized that really the goal here is to maximize safety, you know, maintain parking where we can and to keep, you know, keep trees, especially the older trees where possible, so we're not to take those, they don't have to be taken down. One thing they agreed to was it was a little hard for all of us to wrap our head around really which trees they were talking about, what it looked like, where it actually extend to into people's front yard areas. So there's two things that they agreed to do as a follow-up with that, with respect to that. The first was to do a survey of the right of way. That section is missing in their plans for the Platts. So we don't, they're going to do a survey to understand where their right of way is in that section. And they also said that they would do a schematic overview, adding basically a line, demarcating where the improvements would extend to so you would see what they look like and also notice which trees would be, would be removed by the proposal. They also said that they would look into whether to add a bike lane on the west side, but it would obviously require additional public input because it would affect or could affect the residents on the opposite side. And we flagged to them the need to make sure that they're working with other departments in the county and also the developer who's working, who's going to be developing the properties on Knowles Avenue and Summit to make sure that those sidewalk improvements are coordinated with whatever sidewalk improvements are going to happen on this section. We did ask them to remove the sign on Prospect South, excuse me, on Summit South of Prospect because it was, it says no parking there, but it's basically an artifact of the previous way the road was marked. So they agreed that that didn't need to be there. So parking will be officially restored there. And then Tracy also asked them to investigate the striping that was done from around Brookfield by WSSC during the recent building of a home and adding of the water network there. So that's a lot to digest, but we really, I think what we would recommend doing, and it'd be great to hear public input and the council members' input on this, we asked them if we could have an extra day or two to submit comments because technically they would do September 13th. But given that they're...
I think it was the 10th.
Oh, yeah, September 10th. Yeah, so they gave us a couple of extra days till tomorrow or the next day. But I suspect there would be more opportunities for input since they're going to provide this updated schematic and map to visualize things. But I think what we would, you know, what we would propose is essentially what I mentioned in the beginning, that ideally they would cut off the lane and make it a second, make that second lane a parking lane. But in the absence of doing that, of being able to do that, just to keep the status quo or add enough of the sidewalk or a buffer that you can get by extending it into the, you can, by extending it into the current second lane. One other thing that I forgot to mention, and Tracy, maybe you can elaborate a little bit, was they also agreed that they would look into, they're not, they don't have experience really doing it, but they would look into whether, you know, if they move forward and they would need to take some of that front yard to do these improvements, even if, regardless of how much of it they would take, whether they could be able to, if it is in their right of way, to help compensate some of the homeowners there through adding, you know, a half-moon driveway or give them some sort of parking as a, you know, as a way to have some parking if it ends up being taken away from them.
Yeah, they seem pretty amenable to that if it's in the public right of way. If it's on private property, they would not do that. But if they had enough space to put in, say, a turn pad in front or some way of allowing someone to be able to turn around or, you know, widen the driveway a bit, they would be amenable to that if it's in the right of way.
Exactly. So, I mean, we would, we would really emphasize, you know, investigating the idea of a bike lane on the west side, but most importantly, making sure that the improvements happen to the maximum extent possible north of Brookfield, between Brookfield and Knowles. And then, you know, to work on some agreeable solution in the section where the residents there would be directly impacted. So that's a long, a little bit of a long report. But Tracy and Matt, do you have anything else to add that I may have missed?
No, I think you covered everything pretty well. Michael Palin was there, which Haley was there, and that was very helpful to have him there. And, but, yeah, they're really, they're not willing to give up that lane for through traffic during that period of time during rush hour. And that's part of the reason why I know one of the residents had wanted the line to go from the curb to the line, which gives the impression that it's not a drive-through lane. But that's why it's not theirs because during two hours a day, during Monday through Friday, it is a drive-through lane. So they will not do that, but they will have the utility connect the stripes where it was just a single stripe. So they will do that.
Yeah, and I should mention that if they insist on that and that if it's going to be a drive-through lane, the width of that lane right there, and Darren knows the width better than anyone. I think he was out there with his measuring tape in the past. But that is eight, and that is a 10-foot lane if you actually physically measure it. I don't know what...
Well, that's to the curb. So typically, you aren't driving, you know, on that concrete, so...
Correct, but the lane, the west side to the curb from the line is eight and a half feet and you can still park cars there. So I think there is some opportunity for when there's that two hours where cars can drive there to add a foot and a half buffer and still get a little bit of, a little bit of, kind of, safe haven from the buses.
Right. Right. All right, council, do you have any questions for Nate? Or we open it up?
Well, I had a quick question on, one comment, which is kind of the crux of this whole thing, Nate. What was the operational impact that they spoke of not, of maintaining the drive-through lane? Do they get into specifics of, you know, what the operation is that they're trying to maintain?
No, they didn't. They, what they inferred was that the traffic backs up and then it causes cut-throughs on both sides of Summit from their, from their studies, which I couldn't understand why they would be cutting through, to get to Connecticut over to that area, cutting through Kensington Estates and Parkwood. But they said it has ripple effects throughout the network.
Sure.
Did you see anything, did you hear anything else specific matter, Tracy? I didn't.
No, I mean, that was pretty much it. And I agree, and I questioned them on that. Why, if you're trying to go north on Connecticut Avenue, why in the world would you cut through Chevy Chase View, Parkwood, or Kensington Estates? Because that lane is the turn lane to go to north, to the north.
And I think there, I wonder if it's just that before the lane separates into two drivelines or it's still a single driveline, if it backs up and your plan is to go north to Knowles and make a left to Strathmore, then you may bail out early. But I asked this, here's why I ask it, and it goes to, we've kind of seen this before, Montgomery County DOT and Montgomery County Planning don't always share the same ideas. And there were comments made by planning previously as we, as the DRB reviewed projects at that corner that, you know, part of Vision Zero and how they're planning for roads of the future is to, the county's making, planning is making a real push to eliminate right-turn arrows that they find them to be unsafe for pedestrian movement. And there's a right-turn on green arrow there that really, that's why it gets to the operational. That, that second lane really doesn't add value without that arrow. If it, if right-turn has to stop on red through the whole red cycle, it's going to back up entirely. So I bring it up just to say, there may be a question that we can craft to submit with our comments in the next day or so back to them to try and better understand, you know, if planning comes in and says, hey, when, you know, these projects around here come in, we may remove the right-turn on red, then what does that do to the operational impact of that intersection?
That's a great point, and I think we should put that in there because I don't think, I personally don't think we should give up on closing off that lane now. We should have submitted our comments and see what happens. But the thing is, if I remember correctly, I do believe that Vision Zero calls for, I don't know if it gets that specific, but essentially, if you were to read it by, you know, interpret its suggestions, I think Summit Avenue there is meant to be all one lane and not actually two lanes there.
Yeah, they want to get rid of dedicated right-turn lanes entirely, like across the county. It's not just here.
Yeah, that's the spirit of it, yeah.
Right, which, you know, and I apologize if this is a cheap plug, but it only demonstrates further where the Summit Avenue Extended Project can provide both a better circulation and improved safety corridor for pedestrians and other modes of transportation and, you know, improve the operations and flow of traffic, you know, through that area. Because their studies are anecdotal. All points to the majority of traffic turning eastbound or right is doing so just so that they can get to the next light and make a left to go back northbound on Connecticut.
And we did make that point as well, that the Summit Avenue Extension would provide, you know, basically two bypasses of two lights through Connecticut. And, you know, if I'm going up to Aspen Hill, I'm not going to take a right on Prospect to make that. I want to go straight so I can get further down and escape both those lights. So, but I think cut-through traffic was definitely one of the things that they mentioned, and I'm sure they're hearing it from the other neighborhoods. But, I mean, quite honestly, if you're going north in Connecticut, you're going to go up Prospect. That's why we would want to change those time restrictions with this project.
The only other, because all these things intersect with each other and it's way too early to hypothesize. But HOC belongs to the county school system. They have right of first refusal. Prior to the pandemic, they had indicated that they were planning, it was within their plans, take it back for early childhood. And they even had an early orientation of the building that, you know, they were looking at shifting maybe where the primary entrance was. And I think our hope was, you know, out on Summit Avenue. But how would, you know, let's say they do take it back in two years. How might that impact as well?
Wasn't that for, if they turned it into an elementary school, not pre-K?
Well, yeah.
That drawing was for.
So, yeah. But we, you know, it's just another thing to put into the question bin of, are they coordinating intra-agency amongst the other county stakeholders?
Yeah. Okay. Well, I think bringing up Vision Zero would be certainly helpful in our response to them. I think anything that we can do to point in that direction would be good. Darren, any comments?
You're muted. I have advocated for taking that parking lane out of circulation as a travel lane for the rush hour before we lost that. Initially, it sounds like they're not willing to revisit it. I would hope that, two things. I would hope that we could ask them to revisit, taking it out of circulation when Summit Avenue comes because knowing where that traffic goes, like Connor said, it goes right on Knowles and then gets back on Connecticut to go further north. It's not local traffic. When the Summit Avenue Extension comes, I think the need for two lanes disappears. I think that traffic will all head north up above Knowles. I guess the other ask, in addition to having it, you know, be revisited, is having the sidewalk proposal possibly deferred pending Summit Avenue's development. And the reason for that is that we could end up moving the sidewalk in and then, like I said, discovering we don't need that second lane. And you, at that point, you'll have the buffer that you want from traffic and sidewalks.
That's a good point.
I certainly would be interested in knowing the results of their survey, the right of way, though. Because again, as they point, as their proposal points out, the benefit of a 60-foot right of way is, seems to be minimal. The benefit of a 70 or 80-foot right of way, if they're going to build it now, seems to be more substantial.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just, I think that's a good point. I could, I would just caution asking them to delay the improvements right there or between Brookfield and Knowles because I think it's, you know, that is an accident waiting to happen. And the sooner that they can make that buffer, the better. And if it ends up needing that, that we don't need a lane there, then they can plant more trees. And honestly, that's something that I think almost everybody can agree on. And there's really no disagreement around that, other than to wait. You're the first person ever give a logical reason for waiting. But when is that going to happen? Will be three years from now in reality, when it truly happens?
All right. We all ought to be on the same page as far as pushing for it to occur because it's something that's been under consideration since the 70s. And it's the only solution to, it's the only infrastructure solution to traffic through town. As far as, you know, an accident waiting to happen, if it's an accident waiting to happen, the lane ought to be taken out of circulation now because we ought to always favor pedestrians over traffic. We ought to always favor traffic, pedestrians over this amorphous sphere which we can solve on our side with, you know, cut-through restrictions. We ought to always favor it over cars. So if it's that acute that it's an accident waiting to happen, I think it ought to be, the lane ought to be taken out of consideration, out of use.
Well, I mean, that's, that's something considered if we want to advocate for, but I'm not sure if that's what everybody in the town would agree. But I think that, I think that we have, they have the right of way. There's space by the HOC. Why not just push for it now?
Well, that's my piece. And I do, I do continue to think that the largest voice in this discussion ought to be given to the 11 or so residents along Summit. And it possibly should not be an all-inclusive approach. You know, we could possibly take away travel lane in front of the residences and not be so concerned about it in front of HOC, which doesn't use, it's got fence, that's not fronting on it.
Well, I don't, I mean, the way I've learned that these things don't happen overnight. So what we're discussing now, we're probably looking at probably at least two years before anything would happen. I'd be shocked if it would be sooner than that. So, but I think we need to get our, you know, what our preferences would be, whether they would, they'll... whether they would, they'll welcome them or not. I agree, let's go ahead and just push them to say that we want to close that, that street. Um, just for parking only. Um, I know Rebecca Smith has asked a question about the, the time. I think right now it's four to six. I know we've talked, which seems a little early for rush hour. It may be in line with the times that people get out of Walter Reed and NIH. So I, I don't know how they came up with, uh, four to six, five to seven seems to make more sense. Rebecca, did you, do you know how they came up with that time? Sorry to call on you like that, but.
No, I don't. Um, that's been the primary time since, um, we've lived here since 2008. Um, and, but I've actually noticed, I noticed that the time is usually earlier. It usually starts around three, uh, like probably three 25. Usually it, it's more related to school traffic.
Okay.
So, um, certain, you know, be pre-COVID, certain days of the week, it seemed like Wednesdays were commonly days that got backed up. But other days of the week, um, there's, there could be hardly any traffic depending on people are telecommuting.
Okay. All right. Well, we did not get into changing the times in our conversation with them. So, um, that would be something that we would need to, if they, you know, insist on having this rush hour period. Um, I think we can bring it up at that time.
Okay. My, I mean, I, as I said, I appreciate yours and Nate's and everyone's help with this. And, um, we definitely prefer it to become a parking lane. Um, I've seen just too many times when, when there isn't a barrier there, there isn't a car there, something. People go and they, they whip through to the, to the lane and they're very aggressive. And even with our lovely beacon light and crosswalk, they'll still like almost hit someone. Um, so it's, it's, it, it, it's not, they just, it just is making things like just more dangerous. Um, and, and there are a lot of kids that come and go to the skate park, go play soccer. It's just, um, I, we, since we've been here, there's been at least two kids that have been hit in the crosswalk. Um, and there's probably more that we haven't seen, but I know the one that precipitated the light, so.
Well, sadly, this is how you get action if someone has to get hurt, which is really too bad. But that is, that's, that's how the system works. It seems like you have to have a tragedy. In this case, we were fortunate, the child was not seriously injured, but still scary times for the parents. So, um, so, and I, I've used that crossing. It's, it's very helpful. And people have been very good about stopping. I've not, never had a problem, but, um, I don't do it that often.
So I, I, I had a question now.
Sure.
Studies that they've done, did they take into the effect, the, the beacon light? Because basically if, without that turn lane, or sorry, with the, with, if you were to have that as a pass-through lane, you are basically having people stop in the middle of, uh, in the middle of the, of a, the intersection for that and specifically into two crosswalks.
I'm not sure they, they pointed to any studies. Is that correct, Nate? Um, I think it was just giving up something that they had, that they just weren't willing to do at this time. And I think a lot of it is pressure from the other neighborhood to claim, and maybe it's true, of having cut through traffic.
Yeah, I don't know. I thought, I thought they inferred there was analysis, but we can ask them. I don't know if they actually did this study.
Analysis before?
Oh, definitely. I, I would be willing to bet it was before the, the signals.
Yeah, I don't think they've done anything since.
And, and so I think that there's, I think that that would be an important issue to bring up that basically there's a, a big beacon light there with two, with the reform crosswalk that they had to put in there. And that, that people will park in that crosswalk, and I've seen it. And, I mean, the area is still somewhat unsafe as I was taking my, as I was walking back from dropping my son off at, at the bus stop this morning, um, on the other side of the road, not on my side, I saw a person pass someone on the left-hand side when there wasn't even, so they came into this side because the cars in front of them were going too slow. So there are issues going on there still. And, I mean, I, I literally just saw it this morning, so.
Was the car parked in the, in the crosswalk or was he sta- standing in the crosswalk waiting to get through the light? Just, he didn't actually park? He was just standing?
On the other side and the.
Oh, I mean, the same.
And the car was going 15 or 20 miles an hour, so he decided to pass them on this side in the left-hand lane.
Okay.
Uh, it was around seven, uh, around 7:40. But it was, I, I, I'm just saying, I, it, people, people aggressively use that, that lane. It's just an example of, of traffic. And it's frustrating when that, I mean, literally my, all the kids are going to school right at the exact same time that that idiot's walk, that, that idiot's deciding to, to aggressively drive. And it's, it's happening when they're coming home too.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, I will say that, uh, that just the, on, on any of our streets, the difference between a two-lane road, one lane in each direction, and a three or four-lane road i- is orders of magnitude greater. That bringing it down to a two-lane road, I think would bring it down to the same sort of sanity that we have for the rest of the way on Summit and Cedar, all the way down to Wisconsin. And, and so it's, it's incredibly frustrating to me that, that for that period of time between Prospect and Knowles, the county decides that has to be a three-lane road because it does give the opportunity for passing and aggressive behavior. So I, 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 I've tried. I, I, I wish it could be different.
And I appreciate that. I just, and I, and I don't feel like you guys are, are speaking against us either. I just, it, it's, I see it too much because of where I live.
Sure.
Let me ask, is it, would I, how I summarized, I think, what the priorities were, your views of the residents there? And I know you're not speaking for everybody, but what I gathered is that you would prefer having, you know, assuming that's going to stay two lanes between Brookfield and Knowles, that you would definitely want the improvements to get that buffer right there, right?
So, yeah, so from, from, uh, uh, Brook, yeah, Brookfield and Knowles, it is unsafe uh, to, to, to walk down there. The, the sidewalk and, and, and I have some neighbors down the street, friends of ours, but they, they, they are, they're very worried about the, the trees coming out. I, I, I like the trees. They're very, but I have, I have an 11-year-old and an eight-year-old that don't always pay attention. And I walk through dogs and there's cars that are coming way too close. And so when I'm walking down there, it's just, there's times it does not feel safe. And the times it doesn't feel safe are actually not in rush hour where it's fine because the cars are parked. Um, and, and during, it's during those times where, at this time of day, where it's dark, where it's dark or dusk, where someone's speeding down at 40 or 45. And that generally doesn't happen, but it does happen on occasion. So that's, so that's spot where the buffers would make a really big difference.
Especially since it is a, um, an area where people will cross over from Kensington Estates at the new Beacon. And then they're going to walk into the town by either cutting through behind the HOC or actually taking the sidewalk, sidewalk like they, that should be used.
And I see, I see it both ways. I really see them doing that. I, I see people cutting through the park and I see people walking down the sidewalk. It's, it's really just a personal preference.
Right. Okay. Um, does anyone else in the audience want to make a comment? Not seeing any others. Okay. Nate, do you have enough information that you could do a draft for the council to send out regarding our recommendations?
Yeah, I, I think so. Um, let me just make sure that I've got what I, what I think we're saying is, is essentially we would prefer that it gets closed down to one lane between Prospect. Oh, actually, maybe one lane, the whole stretch ideally. But, um, that it should be at least, uh, shut down for two lights to one lane, uh, between Prospect and Brookfield. Uh, but if in the absence of them willing to do that, then we would ask them to study that closing down permanently to one lane. Uh, once the Summit Avenue Extended is moving into implementation phase. Uh, but in the meantime, to, to, to definitely move ahead with the improvements in that stretch we were just talking about between Brookfield and Knowles. And then also to advocate for the bike lane to be added, or at least the public process for the bike lane.
I, I think we'd like the opportunity to comment again, once we see that, um, had the surveys been done and the conceptual plan has been presented, I think we'd like to have the option of, of making further comments. I think that would be important as well.
Yeah, and I'll add Connor's point about making sure they're talking to, to one another and coordinating around Vision Zero, other planning issues in other parts of the county, just to make sure it's not going to conflict with that.
Okay.
Is, as we phrase this question, since Summit Avenue Extended is in Phase Two study now, do we try and ask them to insert, you know, is this being considered as part? Because the pedestrian safety redesigns of, you know, that can be incorporated into Summit Avenue Extended. Is it, you know, I guess this is a good way of putting, we're due for an update from MCDOT on the Phase Two, uh, study. Um, where are they? What's the timeline? And then, you know, depending on where, what that answer is, can this question of inserting pedestrian improvements and maintaining a single northbound lane be included in that Phase Two study?
Yeah, I can, I can phrase it that way.
Anything else? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Nate.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Okay, so we'll move on to, uh, to number three. Connor?
Yep. Um, this is a update to a county-wide, uh, uh, policy change and that the Department of Planning is looking at. And I want to be, try to be very clear from the outset. I've given a number of updates about the, the Montgomery County Planning Board's update to the general plan called Thrive 2050. This is tangentially related, but this is not about Thrive. This is a whole nother policy being discussed, referred to as the Attainable Housing Strategies Initiative, or A S, A H S I. The point of the Attainable Housing Strategy Initiative is that as part of the rewrite to the general plan, um, the county has realized that, you know, one of the, the, the leading things that they're trying to do is, first it was to find more affordable housing, but now it's to find what's called attainable housing. And the idea being that, um, the cost of housing is going up in the county uh, faster than, than the median income is rising. Rents are going up in the county, again, faster than median incomes are rising. Um, the demographics of the county are shifting, especially as they've gotten the most recent, uh, uh, census data. And what they are discovering is that the pace at which the county is growing in households and residence is outpacing the housing stock. And what they're trying to look to do is determine strategies for, uh, strategic infill development in the residential zones. So there's a lot of, you know, complex development language that I'm going to try not to use. But, but one of the things that I want to get clear is what has generally been referred to as the single-family zone or the single-family residential zones are the, are the districts that they're really looking at. So our 200s, our 90s, our 60s, our 40s. For the town of Kensington, why this matters, our entire town, with the exception of those areas where, um, multifamily, you know, apartment buildings and townhomes are currently, is entirely zoned R60. So I want, that's an asterisk for everybody to know at the outset. What attainable strategy is doing is they are looking at policy changes, potential zoning changes to try and get more units of housing in the residential zones that those units are typically smaller or multifamily. And that can especially be house-sized and located within the residential districts like the R60 that, that, where we all live in town of Kensington. So this was on, uh, on the 9th of September, the Planning Board had work, working session number two on the Attainable Housing Strategy. There will be three more, October 7, October 21st, and November 4th. This meeting was focused on a number of issues. The first was, um, the definition of scale and size of what would be allowable within these different districts, the, the residential zones. And what the Planning Board has vocalized is that they want to allow duplexes or, you know, dual, uh, two-unit dwellings, triplexes and quadplexes. So four dwelling units by right within all of the, the residential zones, but specifically within the R60, which impacts, uh, the town of Kensington. They also want to create what's, they're referring to as the Priority Housing District. And they are defining the Priority Housing Districts as those places where the most amount, the greatest density of housing is needed. It's primarily along transit corridors. So it, the way they've defined it is within a one-mile straight line radius of the red line, the purple line, any marked station, and within 500 feet of any bus rapid transit zone and two specific, um, uh, roadway corridors, Connecticut Avenue and, and River Road. So that definition of the Priority Housing District encompasses the entire boundaries of the town of Kensington. We are squarely within, uh, that Priority Housing District. In that Priority Housing District, the way they phrased it is that they would allow up to quadplexes, so four dwelling units, uh, could be built by right on a residential lot, pursuant to a couple of other things that they're still reviewing. One is the idea of creating a pattern book. And the pattern book would lay out with, uh, uh, graphical depictions where, uh, residences can be placed, um, how, what their size can be, their total height, their overall lot coverage, the orientation on the lot. They would also give some specific recommendations for, uh, how to design and break up the, the frontages and the roof lines to get it to be, you know, conforming and to look like the, the structures around it. They don't want, you know, large square monolithic buildings. How to incorporate a, the streetscape or the frontage of the property such that it is welcoming and inviting and, and neighborly, uh, in its look. So they want to promote, you know, front porches and stoops and, uh, walkways. They also want to minimize, uh, parking and the impact of parking, i.e. driveways. So within the Priority Housing District, not only would they allow up to a quadplex by right, but they would also reduce any parking requirements for that, which means more, more often than not, trying to push parking onto the public roadways. Um, you know, we've heard we have parking challenges in different parts of the town already, but some of our roads are narrower than others and, and create additional parking problems as it is because we have a number of parts of town where people don't have off-street parking. Um, and so these are, are the challenges that we are reviewing with the, uh, the Attainable Housing Strategy. Um, if the pattern book is approved, and the pattern book is supposed to be the focal part of the next, uh, working group, the one that is on October 7th, then any development of new housing would be required to conform to that pattern book. And the pattern book, like I mentioned, is supposed to dictate the size, placement, orientation, setbacks, lock coverage, um, so that they can try and keep the form and function of all these houses uh, as neighborly as possible. In fact, the, the direct quote is that they will contribute positively to the public realm and create a safe and attractive streetscape that now, that are not overwhelmed by parking and that do not unintentionally look like small apartment buildings. So this, you know, there's a lot more talked about. Um, there were other things recommended by Planning Board staff that the Planning Board itself was not in, um, uh, agreement to. One of the things that they were looking to do is put a hard maximum on the total square footage for, uh, you know, duplex, triplex, quadplexes. The Planning Board does not want to restrict, uh, the overall density of projects. They want the, the density to be driven by what the market can bear within the parameters of the orientation and setbacks and height of the building. That, you know, within those confines, they should be able to achieve the, the density restrictions. So they aren't looking to hard code those, but. So they aren't looking to hard code those. But why I'm bringing this up tonight for the council's discussion is, well, first for residents. If this is something you are, want to know more about, you can certainly ask me. I, I, I told the mayor that I think the next thing likely is I'm going to write something up and put it out on the town's website and, and promote it on the list serve to try and educate residents who haven't been following this discussion. But I also urge people to get involved and attend. They're all on Zoom. And you can watch them after the fact, the Planning Board meetings where they are discussing the attainable housing, uh, work sessions. Like I said, October seventh, twenty-first, and November fourth are the net, are the remaining three. Um, get engaged. There is the ability to testify, um, as well. I, I would like to hear from residents. What are your thoughts, concerns? Do, you know, does the idea of having a duplex next to you or a triplex next to you, um, you know, how, you know, what are your feelings about that? Um, I, I'm, I will be transparent about my feelings. I grew up in a town that I've said many times is, reminds me a lot of Kensington. And there were, what I would call houses across the street from me, that until I started running a paper route with my brothers, I had no idea they were duplexes. Same size, same setbacks and heights, things I didn't think about as a, you know, ten-year-old. But, um, I didn't realize until I had to drop off two newspapers that there were two dwellings in that same building. So when done right, this is my point, when done right, you, you may not even really notice. Um, the, the devil is in the details, as they say. That's why the planning book session that's going to be on October seventh is very important to follow along to. But if you have thoughts, ideas, or concerns, I would very much like to hear, hear about them. You can, you know, call, text, email me. Um, for the council, we've already talked, I mean, we've been talking about this for some time, and we've looked at specific areas of our code um, to look at, at updating. And I do think it's worthy, in light of, of this, to really look at our parts of the code where we piggyback off of the county and we accept the county's, uh, uh, restrictions and determine if we want to put in our own kind of, um, hardwired restrictions, the way we want them written. There are several other municipalities nearby us that have done this. Uh, so for instance, we don't say anything about lock coverage, total lock coverage. In the county, the total lock coverage is thirty-five percent maximum, uh, by county standards. But Garrett Park, obviously just to our west, they have a lock coverage, it, it's fairly aggressive at eighteen percent is their maximum lock coverage. Um, the county's height maximum right now is thirty-five feet. Uh, and down in Chevy Chase, at the town of Chevy Chase, uh, they have a restriction that places it at thirty-three feet. Um, then, you know, and, and some of these have additional very well-thought-out articulated lawyerly language-taking averages of things. We can get into it a lo, another time. But another one is setbacks. We have more restrictive side setbacks than the county. Uh, county's at eight, we're at ten. Uh, there are others with, you know, Garrett Park again, and town of Chevy Chase, which I focused on, uh, research over the weekend, where they have even more restrictive setbacks than that. Um, so since we've already begun talking about it, Darren, I know, uh, we've talked about it, especially in light of, um, the county's evolving thoughts of what is a bay window. Uh, those are other areas where I think it would be worthy for us to divest ourselves from a, a piggyback with the county and look at flushing out ours code to be specific about what the, the maximums and restrictions are that we want for the town. I will pause for questions.
I have a quick question. If we, if we did that, are, are we sure, are we certain that if it's by right that we would be able to, you know, if the, the consensus of the town was that we wanted to, to not follow, you know, that we didn't want to have quad, quadplexes in, um, in the yard next to us or in our own, you know, in our neighborhood or whatever this, the, the, the opinion is or the consensus. Would we basically be engineering it into our code to not have those apply to us then?
So, uh, not being a land use attorney, uh, here's how I think I would respond to. Uh, one of my recommendations is that there are some questions I think we need to put together for our town attorney to ask, you know, has the, uh, the ability for municipalities to be more restrictive than the county ever been tested? Right? And what has happened when it has? That's the big picture. To your direct question, you know, we can be more restrictive is, is the way, you know, we do our side setbacks. And does that mean if we didn't want quadplexes, could we write into the code that, you know, you can have a maximum of three dwelling units on a lot? Again, I'm not a land use attorney, obviously, I, I envision that's how one would have to write it, but one, can we do it? And two, is it defense, you know, you know, is there any challenge that, that the county could bring against it? I mean, to your point, if they pass this and it says by right, then yes, the, the, the lot next door, I mean, there's the other thing is there are further restrictions and a whole nother layer for those properties within the historic district, right? And, and the county doesn't focus on that first, but, but we do, we just have a large portion of our town that is within a historic district or the, the Kensington Historic District. So there's a whole nother layer that goes on top of this, Nate. Um, but for those areas that are outside of the historic district, um, you know, can we, could we craft our code in such a way that we can do that? That is a question I, I very much have for our town attorney.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I know that's a tough question, but I also, you know, I would just, since I'm, I've got the floor, I would definitely support looking into what we can or can't do. And I know Darren's already taken on some of that, but, um, I'm not sure if that's added to his list of things to do, but, uh, I'm happy to help out however I can.
Now that you've taken on traffic, I have all sorts of time on my hands, apparently.
This is true.
Um, I, I, yeah, I know, I've started the list. I've, I've, I've done a survey of some, uh, nearby municipalities. And, and so it's a question of, of, um, you know, what have they done? And can we do the same thing? And do we want to do the same thing? My gut sense is that, um, this ability to add duplexes, triplexes, quadrplexes is by and large a gift to developers. But I, I think it's, um, you know, the, the primary customer of some of these homes will no longer be, um, you know, single families that want to move into this area, but will be developers who want to add a second unit or third unit to the lot and then sell it to, um, to, to, to an additional party. And, and so I would like to look at the question of what can we do and what should we do? And, and I've already started that, and I, I, I'm happy to share the work. You know, we, we have a house up the street on Farragut, which again is, certainly on this block of Farragut, is a narrow street with very limited parking. And, um, the original, it, it didn't really have to have justification, but the, the, the narrative that we are sold for these ADUs is that it's so that an, uh, a, a, a parent can come live on the lot. And in this case, you know, they built an additional unit. Uh, that there's extraordinarily limited parking on the street. It's very narrow. And, um, now through changed circumstances, the, the home is being sold. Um, obviously, the additional unit is not being torn down because that purpose is no longer there. It's, it's going to be there forever. And, um, I, I, I do think we have to look at things like the ability of the street to, to, um, accommodate that additional parking. And just how much it, it changes the character of our, of our street and, um, under this guise of, well, you're close to mass transit, when the mass transit that it's close to has nothing on the order of the service of mark. So all good questions for the future, and, and I'm happy to work with anybody who's interested.
Yeah, a, a few, just points real quick for something you said, you know. First of all, what was interesting is staff recommended the radius for Mark to only be a half mile, which still puts us in the crosshairs as a town, right? Having a stop right in the center of town. Um, but the Planning Board took it further and wanted it to be a mile from all modes of, of public transport, and then five hundred from the BRT. Um, so there is this, you know, real emphasis. But other questions that have not been addressed or answered by the Planning Board, and it goes to Rebecca, your question in the chat, how do these things differ from ADUs? So they talked about specifically, you know, what is a duplex? As opposed to what is a home with an, uh, internal or attached ADU? And they realize that those two things can come into conflict with each other, and they've got to iron that out. But the other thing that came into conflict was they haven't addressed whether or not ADUs can still then be added to these, because they're, they're, they're defining it now as a, the primary structure and then the accessory structure. And the primary structure could be a quadplex, and that primary structure could then still get an ADU. Um, and so the permutation of this is that you could end up with, you know, five different pieces of, of housing on the lot that was originally intended for one, right? You know, uh, realizing that, you know, what they're trying to do is achieve additional housing. They haven't ironed out some very large questions around how this already plays with other housing changes that they've made recently. Those are things to be addressed, uh, within the next working sessions, which is why attending them is, is important. Um, but it really does go to a, we don't know what the end state of this is yet, other than, um, the idea being how do they a, a, attain infill development around, uh, the, the residential zones? Another issue brought up, but not fully codified yet, is whether or not this only pertains to new construction or how it would pertain to tear-down construction. Um, and there were some differing opinions and, and strong stances by the, the Planning Board members. But, uh, as of right now, it would, you know, it was leaning toward only applying to new construction, right? So, uh, it would provide fewer controls against somebody who might take a, you know, smaller home, uh, that is obviously more affordable by its, the nature of its size, buy it, tear it down to build a massive structure, the larger, the maximum, I shouldn't say massive, but the maximum structure, and then devise that into multiple housing units or dwellings. So, um, quite a bit to digest there. I, in conversation with, uh, Mayor Tracy, realized that this is, there's a lot of technical jargon. There's a lot of, of different policies that are overlapping and, and touching each other. Uh, I'm going to work to, like I say, draft something that is hopefully somewhat layperson, uh, and also as succinct as possible. Darren, I may lean on you as, uh, since we've already had a lot of these discussions. And then put that out for people to digest with an emphasis on, please participate, you know, join those meetings, testify if you feel so inclined. If you don't feel like publicly testifying, but you want to make your voice heard somewhere, you, you know, send it to me, send me an email, uh, or give me a call. I'd like to hear from residents on, you know, what are their thoughts? And maybe it's a, hey, I'm okay with it if they do X, Y, and Z, which is a lot of what we have been advocating for as a town, uh, and as part of the coalition of, of municipalities and, and homeowners associations of trying to inject real-world topics that we see every day in our communities into, uh, these plans.
Connor, do you have an idea?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Nate.
I was gonna ask, timing-wise, do you have an idea when this would be implemented if it did pass?
So, that's another interesting thing. Some of what they're talking about with pattern books and the, the, um, the building dimensions and things like that, that for control, there was, uh, specific desire by the Planning Board staff, or I'm sorry, Planning Board members, and specifically Planning Board Chair, that this not get codified into the zoning code or into necessarily a ZTA, but rather was maintained as a Planning Board requirement. Um, and the logic there was twofold. One, it becomes more arduous to change if it's a zoning code, because it has to go through a ZTA. Um, they'd like to try and keep it where if, uh, it needs to be modified, they could do it quickly and easily. That's why I keep the planning book, uh, with the Planning Board and just make it a mandatory requirement for Planning Board review. Um, but they have to finish these three working sessions. The other thing the Planning Board was specific about is that they do not want to see this tied to Thrive, because neither one of them has been passed yet. So they are not being, um, joined together as, as policies. But based on the timeline of the, the, the final working session is November fourth, um, you know, I would expect that recommendations would be finalized with the Planning Board at that time. Uh, they'd be, then be drafted into a final version, and then the, the Planning Board would be ready for submission to the County Council for review. You know, I don't know, probably not the November meeting, but I would gather probably as early as the December meeting. So I think it's gonna go quick.
Yeah, and I think we should also be engaging the, the County Council members too.
Agreed.
But a, as well as the, the other municipalities, because I think MML might be a useful, um, resource.
Well, are the, uh, Montgomery chapter, although the chair is Rockville, and they have, um, they have their own zoning in Rockville, but they would still be helpful.
Yes.
I think their meeting is the twenty-fourth, I think, or twenty-third, maybe, on the, the MML meeting. I think it's the twenty-third, the Thursday. Um, I, I think the most disappointing thing, and, and this is brought up with, uh, a commercial as well, is this idea that nobody drives anymore. And I, I know there are people that don't have cars, and I realize that, but, you know, a quadplex in a neighborhood such as what Darren is on Farragut, literally could bring, you know, four to eight cars, um, because they're not required to provide any onsite parking. And that is really, um, I don't know how you do that.
Yeah, and that's the biggest problem.
That Chevy Chase, we tried to grapple with was saying, you, you can build these, uh, but you'll have to provide additional parking spaces over what you currently provide. And I don't know if they finalized it, but it, um, that's the sort of thinking that we need to be doing here.
And, and I don't know how that, my, I don't know how that, um, with us being in that priority housing district where the Planning Board has set it out that very specifically in that district, so it can go all the way up to quads and essentially remove or eliminate parking, any sort of parking relief, um, is something, Darren, to your point, I want to, you know, is there anything we can do to try and, uh, be more restrictive about that?
And, and just to quickly respond to, um, I, I saw in the chat, um, Karen Craig's post. I, I'm certainly looking towards the future and, and, you know, maybe, who knows what it'll bring? Maybe it'll bring, you know, a totally different version of car ownership. Uh, my concern though is with the present, and that, that we will, as I said, I, I fear that we're going to make the primary customer of real estate the developer who wants to make a quick buck and doesn't really care whether his plans and, and his additions to a, to a lot are realized in the future. He's, he's only concerned about the deal that is in front of him at the time. So I, I think it is a balance of future planning, but, but present, um, needs in case that doesn't pan out. I do see Jack has his hand up. Tracy, I don't know.
I'm sorry, Jack. Go ahead, Jack.
Yes, thank you. I, I have, I have two comments. First, I think there is a danger, bring what Connor said, I think there is a danger to piggyback on the town code. Because then if, if the, if, 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 if the, if the county changes the, changes the code, then we have automatically adopted that change. And they're very likely that they were going to do that at some point. My second point is I, I agree with what Mayor Tracy said, that if people build additional units, I think they should be required to provide additional parking for the cars, for the people who are going to live in these units.
Thank you, Jack. Uh, Joe, you've got your hand up.
As I do, Mayor Furman. Thank you very much. And, and thanks to, um, Councilmember Crimmens for keeping on top of this and other related issues with county, uh, county planning. Uh, just a couple of questions, um, perhaps for you, Connor, do you have any sense of how the, uh, County Council members are lining up on this issue? I'm thinking the at-large council members as well as District One.
Um, no, but only because it's a, there's a couple of things going on. There's been two different pushes. One is the content of the policy and how they might be lining up on the actual policy as written. The other is the process that was used to get us here. So there's been a lot of commentary and community So there's been a lot of commentary and community input about it's moving too fast. You know, there hasn't been enough public input, we're in the middle of a pandemic. You know, the county does, through the writing of their their staff reports, acknowledge that they're getting input and they're, they are, you know, using community input to to drive some of the recommendations. But there's a whole swath of areas that have no idea that this is even going on. The other thing I, the only other thing I would say is, if we look at, one of the things that helped kick this off was Councilmember Juwondo's ZTA from a year or so ago about housing and density. You know, yes, we have a housing shortage crisis within the county. You know, looking at all the county reports, it is true. There are far more people, both households and in, you know, individuals moving in than there is housing available. And and that's before we even get into what is attainable and what is even affordable. But part of that was also created, I hate to say, by the county's previous policies, right? They, there are something like 80,000 units of housing that were approved by the planning board, but were never built. And they were never built for a myriad of reasons. Part of it is the economics weren't there, the market changed. Part of it was the promised developments that the county was was pushing never got off the ground. Or were delayed by a decade. So developers were were prospecting and and, you know, they believed that, hey, we should get our plans approved. And then when this, you know, this new redevelopment comes to light, we'll be right there, ready to build it. But then for one reason or another, it it never came to light. The other is there were other restrictive policies that the the county implemented, such as moratoriums, right? And schools got overcrowded. They stopped approving projects that would provide more housing with the thought that adding more housing added more school kids. Without looking at the fact that it's, you're stopped building houses, but you didn't stop the inflow of of new residents.
My my question about the, how the council, county council members are lining up was intended to to say, okay, maybe there's some pressure points we can apply to 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 those folks. Another question, Connor, I guess, is can you elaborate in any way how they expect streets in in our town and other and other municipalities would not be overwhelmed by parking? I mean, let's not be naive here, the parking is going to be an issue. And people in in duplexes or triplexes or quadplexes are going to be driving, at least in the foreseeable future. So is there any sense that that they provided as to how streets are not going to be overwhelmed with with on-street parking?
I am trying to figure out how to delicately and professionally put this.
Well, why don't you just put it straightforward and candidly?
They honestly don't care.
They don't care.
They don't care. They they do not care about cars, which and and to the comments, I get it. The idea of like, let's build to multimodal and and trying to make more pedestrian friendly. We're trying to do that within the town and totally. But there's still a reality that has to be met.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And and their point is, if we don't build it, then they will come, right? The idea being why we picked this radius and these priority housing districts is it's next to Mark. It's next to Redline, it's next to the future Purple Line, it's next to the Bus Rapid Transit. So if there isn't parking, then people will change their behaviors and they will simply go to to transit. Which I I think is a worthwhile goal, but I will speak only for my own personal life. One challenge is, I'm not, I don't live one dimensionally. If the only place I needed to go was from my home to my work, I could do that on transit. And and it wouldn't be too difficult. For those who don't know, I I work in Arlington County, you know, I work in Roslyn. I, you know, there's easy ways to get here on transit. The challenge is that I I don't live one dimensionally. When I leave here, when I come to this office, there are times that I have to go to other places where my work takes me to client sites. I also have to go in the middle of the day to pick up a sick kid. I also then have to go to sports and music and things for my family that are all over the county from
Right, nobody lives one dimensionally.
Right, all the way over to McLean High School in Virginia. And so that's one of the challenges that I was just being kind of, I I don't want to say ignored, but just not talked about.
Yeah, it's the reality of life. We don't live one dimensional lives. And finally, I just wonder, does this sort of exist already? In the sense that a single-family homeowner could, and in fact does in this town, rent out parts of the house to tenants on short or medium-term leases? And, you know, you have multifamily housing already, but it's under the guise of a single-family dwelling. Don't we already have this? And and is that not the way that, you know, you know, could already be be happening?
Yeah, there's, so your question, Joe, is not only a good one, but there's even additional layers that I'd peel back on it, such as the whole goal of the attainable housing strategy is to make housing attainable first by price. But then really about ownership and getting people to build equity through housing. That that there's this divide between those who can afford to own versus those who are are, for lack of a better term, kind of regulated to renting because ownership is just too unattainable within the county. And so some of the things they're looking to do in this are really, really smart and good about how they can create, you know, a duplex and subdivide a single lot and and create the duplex down the center line so that they could become fee simple properties and therefore you could get mortgages and then that could create smaller dwelling units, but that are more attainable by price point. They're great, but but two, what it's kind of ignoring is, one, the county has acknowledged that part of the reason that housing stock is becoming less attainable is there's fewer homes available because some of it is being lost to private equity investment. The the nature of Airbnb and short-term rentals has created a submarket where owning single-family homes for the express purpose of renting it out on short term is profitable enough to to not put that home back into the real estate market. I own a home and maybe I'm overhoused at the moment, my kids leave and we're deciding we're going to downsize. If I can afford to keep that home and rent it out and the rent covers the mortgage or I'm already done with my mortgage and it covers my rent next rental, or I move into the ADU in my backyard and rent the front. That, these are all real challenges of our real estate market. And then to your question is, are people already renting, say, like a room in their house, right? And there are, you know, the the county governs how that's supposed to happen with certificates of of occupancy and things like that. But I think there's a realistic, I mean, we'd be naive to say it doesn't happen. There are people who, their circumstances are that they don't want to leave their home. But if they can offset or or gain income with the overhoused portion of their home they're not using by renting out rooms and taking in roommates because it helps, you know, pay the bills, yeah, that's that's occurring, you know, across the county.
Right, right. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Furman.
You're welcome. Okay, Karen, you have your hand up. Would you like to make a comment?
Yeah, sorry, I'm always in the midst of bedtime, which is why I defer to put comments in the chat. But I wanted to expand a little bit because I thought that some of the things that the planning is considering actually makes sense regardless of whether or not we support, you know, how, single housing to be replaced by duplexes or triplexes or quads. Only because if you look at the type of development that's happening in town right now, I think the developers are already winning. If you don't have the money by the time that you're kind of aged out of your home to add extra bedrooms and extra bathrooms, your house is being bought at a low cost and being flipped by a developer into today's version of a McMansion.
Karen, we lost your, we lost you. Can't hear you.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. But anyhow, like tho- those changes are are happening regardless of whether or not it's a a single home. The aesthetics of the town are changing. I think we also have to think about who's moving to Kensington now and what type of families they are. They're probably largely families that are coming from the city where they're used to relying on public transportation and only having one car. And trying to find ways in which you can do many of those multi-dimensional family activities, but within a smaller radius of your house. And if we allow this type of increased development, all of those types of activities are going to come closer to our homes as well. I think it's also a very common strategy that towns
Oops.
Sorry. That towns and planners use to remove parking spaces and reduce traffic lanes as a way to discourage people from using their cars. Certainly, I think we're also naive to think that driving is going to exist the same way 20 years into the future. We're likely to see things being introduced into this area such as alternative driving into the city based on your license plate number like they have in London. Or increased toll roads and costs for parking spaces. Pushing people to adopt new behaviors. I really think that the town's position should be focusing on solving the problems of parking, car use and traffic now, while also supporting ways that we can fit into this vision that the county has to support the growth that makes sense, to support Washington DC and the jobs that we have in this area. So things like car share, increasing our advocacy for people to utilize Mark train and the bus connections, which right now are not fully utilized, particularly in this town, would go a long way to solving that traffic congestion problem and also making space to plan for the future.
Thank you. Council, any comments for what Karen's thoughts were or?
One thing I'd add, and I think it dovetails, Karen, I'm not trying to put words into your mouth, but I do think it dovetails with what you're saying is, in part of Thrive, what they talk about is 15-minute living. And the idea is supposed to be that you should be able to live, work, recreate, shop, dine, all within 15 minutes. That's kind of the the planner's vision for 2050. And if if achieved, it sounds amazing. I, you know, the, some of the the comments I've made about Thrive 2050, is there a little light on some of the details of how they're going to get from 2021 to 2050? But as we talked about the dimensions of living, ironically, a lot of what the county sets up with its own programs don't support that, right? And just, I'm thinking about, again, it's obviously my family, my kids. When we sign up for, you know, sports related to the county, we're often, you know, going way over to Potomac or we're going up to Gaithers. It's just, that's where they have fields available that that the programs are put at. So as much as I would love for my son to walk outside and his lacrosse practice were at St. Paul Park, it just is never going to happen, right? We had some things there when they were little kids. And and that's where I I wish, I mean, I'm the biggest advocate, I wish everything happened just in the town, right? I wish all of our events were at St. Paul Park, at Donna Kensington Cabin. And, you know, you know, the biggest thing we had to do was just wait for traffic, you know, a stop sign or a crosswalk. But I don't know whether we're going to achieve that. To the point of this one policy, the attainable housing, it's really how do we create more housing across the county? But being mindful of placing that housing where people are desiring to live and along the corridors that can help them achieve, say, car-free living. I think those are all wonderful ideas. And and that's exactly the way that the county should be pursuing. And I understand why, where we're located, along Connecticut, on a Mark station, not too far from two Redline stations and the Purple Line. Yeah, I I get why we're right smack in the middle of it. Again, it just goes to the devil in the details. You take the lot next door to me, that's an R60 lot, and all of a sudden you want to put a fourplex on it. If it, if you've got the height and the lot coverage and the setbacks and you nail all those things where a person walking down the street from the outside wouldn't recognize it as being four units of housing versus one, then I think you've nailed it. But the devil in the details are things like stormwater management and parking, which are, we just know to be issues now. And how is the the county going to achieve it? There's three more sessions. I'll keep updating people on how these things are evolving. It may be that some of these things bubble up and and start to get clarified in the the next two months. But as of last week's session, this is kind of where the attainable housing strategy is right now.
Just one more comment, because I think, yeah, I agree with everything that you just said, Connor. And I think this is, the devil is in the details. But one thing I think we should be doing is, you know, I I'd love to know really what the impetus is behind the attainable housing idea. I find it hard to actually buy the concept of attainable housing. When we know there are duplexes or triplexes going in on the corner of Knowles and Summit that are, I don't know whose definition of affordable is there, but you see the price that's on the corner. To me, that's not attainable, it's certainly not affordable. But John Gerson has a good comment here in the chat. But I think in addition to this, we should really be advocating on, you know, what is affordable housing? How we can promote that within, you know, in accordance with our sector plan, where we have expected to and planned for the development to happen with the multi-use, mixed-use housing? And and be advocating for affordable housing. I think it's a really good point that, you know, getting into this, into this discussion around attainable housing, you know, I'm I'm not sure it's going to, we have to, we have to do what we're doing. And thank you so much for being on top of everything. But I think that we should be advocating for affordable housing opportunities within within our sector plan and within those those units. And I know that we've done that before, we continue to do it at DRB. But maybe we can somehow expand that conversation and bring folks like John into the discussion.
Two comments real quick on your comments. One, yeah, I mean, through the DRB, we've really pushed on MPDUs. And we've got a number of projects that are bringing, you know, large amounts of MPDUs. Some are age restricted, but we're we're getting them. And and this is where I, I honestly am very proud of the town. We are, we're walking the walk of a lot of things that county is advocating for. They want to see more missing middle types of housing. And so they're advocating things like duplexes, triplexes, townhouses, right? So, okay, it's only six units, but we're looking at six units of townhouses and we've got MPDUs. But to your point, those townhouses, I mean, are they more attainable than the price point of some of our single-family homes? Sure, they cost less per per housing unit. They cost way more per square foot. They may be more attainable just on the dollar value, but they're not really more attainable, right? This is, and and the then the bigger struggle I have around attainable versus affordable is as Thrive started, the goal was affordable housing. And the reality became quickly that down county, the the cost of land alone makes the reality of those properties being affordable unrealistic unless there's government intervention. And that's one aspect that, you know, these plans don't talk about is what is going to be the direct government intervention to bring the price down? When things are at market, right, I can build a quadplex next door to my house. And, you know, if it costs me a million dollars, I'm just using round numbers. If it costs a million dollars to obtain the the struct, you know, the the primary dwelling and the land next door to me and I were to carve it up, you know, do I, am I charging $250,000 each for those? No, I mean, you're probably charging four, $450,000. You actually might, you know, get more quote-unquote value or or return from those units. They may be more attainable because their price point is lower. But they're, you know, by based on AMI standards, they're still not going to create affordable housing without government intervention. This is, I mean, this is the a huge challenge. It's just so expensive to live in Montgomery County. And it's not just our problem, in close proximity to Washington. You know, all of the, and I will put some links into the chat here and I'll ask Matt to put them on the website. Fairfax County, Loudoun County, Howard County, we're not alone in this, the district itself. But that's why I say, you know, there's many things in the attainable housing strategy that I think are smart and worthwhile. But there are also things that I just want to make sure we're not attempting to solve one problem by creating another.
Well, there's also no guarantee that a quadplex is going to give home ownership. It may just give rental. You know, the owner could be living in, you know, it's an investment property and he's down in Florida and he's renting those for apartment, you know, his apartments rather than condos. And, you know, as someone who lives with it, you know, I'm one of nine townhouses. We have an HOA, we pay fees. And those fees for, you know, we don't share roofs, but if you shared a roof, you've got to pay fees to maintain the structure. So, you know, so that's a big problem with MPDUs in condominiums. It's because you may get a lower price, but it doesn't lower your fees. So a luxury condo, a lot of people can't afford to live there because they can't afford the condo fee. And they're finding out that's a really big problem, especially, you know, in Bethesda and these areas where they are high priced. So I I appreciate the fact that they're looking into this. I don't think we're, you know, totally against this. It's more of the devil's in the details. And I don't think it's going to And I don't think it's going to um get people into ownership is is what they they think it's going to, which I, you know, get them out of renting so they could start building that equity. So I I am concerned about that. All right. Unless we have anybody else, I think we've uh talked this for a fairly long time. And Connor, so you're going to write something up? Is that correct?
Uh, yeah. And if it times well with a journal article, great. If not, we can just place on uh the website or and I will, you know, I'm happy to push it through the listserv, but, you know, always reservations that the listserv is not one, the towns, nor two inclusive of everybody.
Well, I think it's a pretty important topic, so I'm not sure. We probably aren't going to do a uh another journal until uh it'd be an October, November issue. So it'd be probably, you know, in October, early October, when we'd have the deadline and we would have missed, um, well, you have one more in November, but perhaps we could just send um the letter out individually. I have no objection.
Okay. And then, you know, I'm, yeah, and I'm happy to update it as we go with each work session that comes about.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you very much. Um, okay, uh, we're going to move down to number four, which is the Howard Avenue mural. Um, we put into the budget this year to do a mural on the, it's a building that sits on Metropolitan Avenue. And it faces Howard Avenue. Um, so this is a concept drawing for the backside. It is supposed to be a nod to Noise Library and the children are, there's, she's still working on it, would be carrying books. She didn't, um, it's not as good here as I'd hoped, so she's going, can update that. And then there's the owl for the Noise um Library. It has an owl on it, but I'd like to see the building there as well. I think that would be very helpful. So, open to comments first by the council?
Um, two that I would have, you know, Matt, I don't know if you can zoom in on the right hand portion where the owl is in the kind of looks like shading of the leaves of the tree. It actually says make more noise.
Mm hmm.
Uh, you know, the 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 slogan of Noise Library, to your point, Tracy, if they were to add the bill, just trying to call that out a little bit more. I mean, maybe and I that, again, I'm not an artist. Um, and I don't, every mural that has been done has been great. So that's just a comment. But my other one was, um, I think it would be wonderful to have one of the children here be represented through um, you know, that might have a a a mobility device or, you know, a wheelchair, you know, that that demonstrates the inclusivity of all children.
Okay. Nate, do you have any comments?
No, no, I thought those are the com- the comments, Connor, they make sense. Um, I think it looks really nice. I don't really have anything else to add, to be honest.
Okay. Darren?
I am even worse of an art critic than Connor. But but I I very much appreciate what Nicole has done in the past. So I think with with your comments, um, uh, this will be great.
Okay, maybe that beagle turning into a short hair, a short.
Connor mentioning mobility and all, I feel very small suggesting that my dog's breed be represented rather than some beagle.
Maybe some chickens could go there.
Chicken, that's right, chickens. I'm writing that down. Okay, we'll open this up to the uh and everybody's gone. I can't see anything. Oh, there we go. I I don't want to lose the picture though, Matt. So maybe you can tell me if somebody's hand is up in the audience if they want to make a comment. I think it's helpful having the picture up. Wow. David, do you have a comment?
Yes, uh, thank you. Um, I was unclear. Is this mural supposed to be on an existing wall or a structure to be built?
No, no, it's an existing wall. Right now, it's a white wall that faces Howard Avenue, but the building sits on Metropolitan. If you're on Armory, you see it to your right. It sits next, right next to Modena.
Okay.
Yeah.
There are a couple of, there are doors and a couple stairways that are not represented here, but um it's a big white wall that is prime for a mural.
Okay. Anyone else? Hard for me to see hands.
I don't see any.
Okay, well. All right. Well, we will, I will go back to Nicole with those few comments, um, which uh to make the make more noise, uh, which is their um kind of their tagline, a little bit bolder. So we don't have to guess at what it is. Uh, add a mobility, a child with a mobility device. And then perhaps a silhouette of the library itself um by the tree. That's um the only comments? Okay, great. All right, uh, so we'll do um all right, so let's go down for a council member updates before we move on to a town manager and staff. Um, Connor, do you want to start?
I'm trying to think of I don't believe I have any. I think you'll cover anything else.
Okay, Nate, any comments you want to make?
No, just to thank um the town, basically the town and 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 the the Racial Justice Committee for the the event. I'm sure you might be also doing this, Tracy, but I thought that the back to school event was fantastic and what a great tradition to start. I hope we continue it. Um, maybe you'll provide more of a report, but I I just wanted to say thanks to everybody who helped to plan that. Uh, it was a huge success. And also the the Labor Day parade, or excuse me, not parade, the Labor Day festival.
Festival.
Yeah, uh, just kudos to the town and the town staff and everyone else who planned it.
Okay, Darren?
Um, I I I regret that I was out of town for both the Labor Day and the back to school festival, but I I certainly got some good feedback from from everybody about it. Um, I'll mention one quick thing that um I I appreciate Matt's help this this morning sort of resolve or clarifying. And that is that, um, yeah, I I've had some comments from people about, you know, what can we do about tax relief? And I think a lot of us are anticipating that when, you know, we're we're in the uh the part of the county that gets reassessed for property taxes this year, uh, it's every three years. And so we're up for reassessment in December and based on last year's experience for the other, for whatever part of the county was reassessed that. Um, I think we're all anticipating fairly hefty increases. And um the what we have done since 2006, apparently, in Kensington is we have limited the tax, you know, admittedly, it's not the hugest portion of the property tax bill, but the Kensington portion is limited to a 5% annual increase rather than the county's 10% increase. And so if we were to go up over, if somebody's assessment were to go up 30%, that would be phased in over uh six years rather than three years. Um, and the reason I think that's that's sort of important is that we are, I I think we're in the middle of a real estate bubble where our increases will be reflected in the reassessments. But those increases will not necessarily last the full three years until the the next reassessment. So I think it's something that is fairly unusual in Montgomery County and and in Maryland generally. And it's something I think that um I support particularly for this reassessment, given just how nuts the real estate market is and and what I think that will do to our um reassessments.
And that 5% includes all residents, not just residents over a certain age group. Is that correct?
That's correct. And and so there are other things, there are other other tax credits in in the state and the county that um, some of them ridiculously only apply if you've owned your residence for 40 years. Um, others apply, right? And um, I'm going on 24 here.
And I'm a senior too, so.
Uh, there are other tax credits that apply if you have less than $60,000 a year in household income and less than $200,000 in um it's kind of net assets that that don't include your house and some retirement account. Um, but this is across the board. This is everybody that's sort of protected from that part of the increase.
Okay, okay. So if anybody has any questions about that, uh, I know one resident had asked me a question and I I directed him to Darren and which I knew would be the right person. Um, he likes to get into the weeds on this stuff, but it's very important. So, um, because sometimes information is given out that's not uh correct and I want to make sure that people understand. So is there any questions about that for Councilmember Bartram while we're talking about it? Not seeing any hands. Okay. All right, well, I'll just make a quick report. Um, yes, and I attended the Racial Justice Committee back to school event and it it was great. I mean, it really was very well attended. Everybody had a great time. There are already, the committee's already doing a debriefing and talking about how they can make it better for next year. So that's always a good sign when you're ready to make it an annual event. So I want to thank the committee who really put this together pretty quickly. And um and of course, the town was a a big supporter providing um, um, some financial assistance through a grant as well as, you know, the town trucks and the, you know, tables and chairs and tents. And so it was, it was really, uh, really great. Um, also the Labor Day Festival. Um, I I apologize. I think there was definitely some confusion about whether we were having a parade or not. I, you know, sometimes when you're in the know, you just assume everybody else knows. And um, so I'm sorry for any confusion that people had, but um, it was a beautiful day and it's just so well attended. I think we couldn't be more pleased uh with the event, uh, considering that it was not the same, um, you know, without the parade. So hopefully next year, we'll be able to bring the parade back. Um, which the staff is just looking forward to now. They just experienced a festival. Um, but uh, no, it was really great. Uh, also, um, I want to thank the Kensington Volunteer Fire Department, Station 5, for putting together the 9/11 event on Saturday. Uh, it too was well attended. Um, and it was really a a very moving event. They did a very nice job and uh Chris Van Hollen and Jeremy Bash, uh, who was a uh, worked at the CIA as well as the Pentagon and um, you know, attended and was said a few words and um we we're actually very, very lucky to have uh the Kensington Volunteer Fire Department um with these memorials because we're one of the few in the county that have one. So um, they will not let us forget. And I, um, they have these events every year, but of course, the 20th was um kind of a sad but special anniversary to mark. Um, also, uh, we had the train show, which also was well attended this past weekend. I hope um people had a chance to attend. Um, Gary Ditto and his wife Diana um support the the train show or put it on with, and it goes to uh, provide funding for the Noise Library Foundation as well as the Kensington Historical Society. So people were having a really good time and Troop 439 was out there selling hot dogs, uh, repeating uh what they did uh during the Labor Day Festival. And they were really into snow cones and they were very popular. Um, this Saturday, we have the 8K race. Um, they've changed up the route a little bit, so we'll be starting and ending at Town Hall there at Mitchell Street. So I hope everybody will come out. Um, KVFD will be doing a movie night uh on Saturday uh for seeing at St. Paul Park. And then on Sunday, we have the Opera in the Park uh at Warner Mansion. So busy, busy uh weekends here in September. So um, I hope people will come out for those and we have uh some elected officials from the county who will be attending the Opera in the Park, making um making an appearance, probably short. There's a lot going on that they're attending. The Wheaton Arts Parade is also the same day. So um, but they've all said that they will try to stop by. So looking forward to that as well. So, um, I think I've covered everything. And we are ready to move on. So uh we're moving on to town manager and staff. Matt?
Uh, Mayor Furman, on the agenda are the survey questions um that we discussed during the work session in August. Um, the survey questions are related to town, the town election on whether we will allow 16 and 17 year olds to vote and lawful permanent residents of the uh of the town. If anyone has any questions, um, Councilmember Bartram and Councilmember Engel has been working with staff for almost a year on this. So we're happy to get this out very soon.
Okay, council, if you have any, we've already talked about this, but did you have any comments before I opened up to the public?
Um, maybe just to note that they're going to be sent to registered voters and we're going to to advocate um on the town, I think on the through a town email and then also through the through the listserv and other means for people who are not registered voters, essentially those that might be directly impacted by these two survey questions to offer comments by by emailing them in as well. I just wanted to make sure that that's clear.
Well, we're going to post this on the announcements page on the website as well. Um, and we can also make note on the actual um, um, survey with the link and information. So.
Are they sending it their comments to a particular email address? Is that how you're doing it?
Um, we'll probably have to set up a separate email.
Okay.
We do have a couple that are set up more for permits and information, uh, but we might want to separate this information from that.
Yeah, I think it should be like survey dot D O K dot M D dot gov or something.
Yeah, especially if we're going to have um a potential intern or someone review the initial comments for us. So.
Okay. Yeah, I think that would be a good idea. Okay, anyone in the audience have a question? Not seeing any hands. Oh, I do see. Is there a hand?
Yeah, I do. I'm referring to Campbell. Um, just uh, first, a question of clarity. So the the survey is going to go out to all registered voters and they're the ones who are eligible to participate. And then we're just going to take the comments as advisory? Is that, is that how it's going to work?
Which it's it's a survey. We're seeing if there's any interest in us doing this because we don't have to do a referendum.
Right, but I'm just wondering whose whose responses are going to get counted and um you know, i- if if you're not a registered voter, do you still have a chance to participate and have your voice um heard in this in this poll?
Sorry, Joe, if you missed it, I I mentioned that, yes, we will be reaching out to the voter, the the folks who are not registered voters also to participate in encouraging their feedback as well. It's just more of a logistic issue of how to logistics issue of how to send the the feedback request.
Right, right. I'm I'm just, I'm just still not clear, Nate, as to whose whose responses are going to be counted. Is it just registered voters? And then you're going to take the other, you know, non-registered voter responses kind of advisory or how is that going to work?
Yeah, we're going to ask for qual- basically qualitative feedback from them, you know, if they support it or not. There's not, they're not actually going to receive a a feedback form.
Okay. Um, I I'm wondering if if maybe um adding a question or these two questions to the upcoming election. There's always an election in Kensington and uh we're only, what, less than nine months from the next election? Maybe, I'm wondering whether that might be a better way in in terms of getting response from people across town. It seems less likely that you would run into the to the phenomenon of non-response bias, which which can be a major factor and is a factor in in survey research these days. Non-response bias in which, you know, people who are really more motivated to participate are different attitudinally and politically than those who do not participate. So I'm wondering if you might be able to cure the potential for non-response bias by um or differential non-response by by just having a referendum where everybody who's registered can can come out and vote and do the referendum as part of the June election.
We considered that, Joe, and we all agreed that it would be better to disassociate this from from an election. Uh, because I would even question, we would probably have a response bias with those who are registered as voters because, you know, the the voting numbers are also not extremely high.
Well, they've been extraordinarily high in recent years.
Um, higher, but not, you know, who who, I think the the point is though that this is not meant to be designed using survey methodology and, you know, it's not going to be statistically significant. It's just to gather information. It's one way of getting data and information. If we don't get a lot of good responses, then we know we have to continue gathering or we just give up and we realize that it's not an issue that people really want. We know we have to continue gathering or we just give up and we realize that it's not an issue that people really want.
So then Nate, you're not going to be building policy around the responses necessarily to this, to this survey. It's.
Not, not individually. Oh, sorry, Joe.
It's more for informational purposes rather than for. Policy development purposes. Is that right?
Well, informational purposes that could feed into policy development, I think, but it's not the, it's not going, it's not going to translate directly to the policy. I think any policy would go through public hearing and the same, you know, public input processes that we would with anything.
Okay. And then final question, uh, how long will the survey be out? I mean, in other words, you're going to have, uh, you're, you're mailing this, right? And then you're going to have a, a window for people to respond. How long is that period between the mail out and the, and then the response window closes?
I don't remember the exact timing. We were hoping to get it wrapped up by early October, right?
We were looking at about a thirty day window on the response.
Okay, so later October then.
Okay. Curious to know how much this costs? Do we know?
Well, it'd be mostly the postage and printing of the, so postage to the town. So what about under, um. What is postage for the whole town? I don't remember.
We're looking around a thousand dollars.
Okay.
So.
I'm sorry, a thousand dollars for this, for this survey?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Furman. Thanks, Nate.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So any other questions regarding this issue? Hmm, seeing any hands? Okay. All right, so. All right. So Matt, when do you think that'll go out?
Uh, my hope is in the next week or two. Um, we'll kind of finalize everything, kind of format it, send it to the council, get an okay and then send over to, uh, most printing, so.
Good. Thank you. All right. So next thing on the agenda would be public appearances. Um, this is an opportunity to, uh, speak about anything that is not on the agenda.
Did we call that thing about the engineering services and bridge repair work?
Oh, I'm sorry. Number two. I apologize. I was looking down and I was just looking at this and I completely missed it. Thank you, Darren. Uh, I miss your days as mayor pro temp. Matt, you want to come with that?
Mayor, council, um, town attorney Ferguson is finalizing, um, two RFPs for us right now. The first one will be, uh, a bridge RFP to make. Um, some repairs to our three bridges within the town. Um, I'm hoping to have that one by the end of the month and then maybe sometime in October. Uh, we'll have an RFP to help for engineering services to do essentially a, a storm drain analysis. Um, we're going to break that up into two separate RFPs, uh, one for what we call the C line, which is the primary storm drain system in the town. And the other one will include, um, the other two lines, which are mostly on the north and west side of town. Once we have that RFP out and an engineering, um, firm in place, we'll kind of be able to have a better idea of how to start addressing some of our storm water issues. Uh, within the community. So, um, we're, um, we'll have some answers hopefully, uh, in the next six months or so.
Okay, good. All right. Now, public appearances.
I have a question for Matt really quickly. Matt, in the RFP, are you going to, um. Are you going to ask the, the, it's for engineering design? Is that what it is?
No, it's, it's basically an analysis of the existing storm drain. So what they'll do is they'll run models to, to see what our storm drain system can, the capacity is. Uh, and look for areas where we can expand it, uh, or if we need to make, uh, you know, modifications to the existing system. We know of some areas of concern already, um, and, you know, we're just looking for some guidance on how to improve those areas. So.
Okay, when they, when they evaluate the capacity, is it possible that we put in the RFP that they should look at potential changes in. From climate change, increased intensity, you know, not thinking about the hundred year flood, but maybe thinking about the five hundred year flood, those sorts of. That sort of language that makes sure that they're incorporating these things?
We can check. Yeah, we're, we're using essentially a state, um, bid that they put out a, a few years ago for a similar project. Uh, so town attorney Ferguson and I have spoken with the, uh, state engineer about this a few times. Um, that's kind of what's taken so long. We're, we're kind of learning. This a little bit, you know, I'm not familiar with all the language, um, which has kind of been one of the, the sticking points, so.
So we're kind of beholden to that bid.
Yeah.
All right.
But, um, I mean, we can see, uh, uh, I'll talk.
If there's any, if there's any, I mean, if there's any way to do it, because that bid was, uh, is it a, is it something that we're piggybacking off from previous?
It's just, it's more language and how, how Sue Ellen's formatting it, um. Than anything else, uh, because we weren't really sure how to put this out to an engineering firm, exactly what we were looking for. So the state highway administration has actually been, um, their hydraulics division has been very helpful, so.
Yeah, all right. Just some food for thought. Thanks.
Any other questions about that? No. Okay. Uh, Joe, did you have your hand up for that or is this for public appearances?
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious. So the RFP, is that going to lead to a, um, uh, to, to bids being requested? Does this work?
So we'll send the RFP out to a number of engineering firms, um, and then we'll bring, um, the contract, proposed contracts back to the council. And the council will select, um, an RFP.
So, so it is essentially a bidding process then?
It essentially, yes.
Good. I'm glad to see bids being solicited or will be solicited on this work. Town should do more of it.
Thank you. Okay, uh, I don't see any other hands. So, um, Jack, I think you had your hand up for public appearances. Is that correct?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. I have two astronomical announcements.
Okay.
On, on Wednesday, September twenty-two will be the autumnal equinox at, at three fourteen P M. And on Friday, a Cobra Eight will be the, the Cronin meteor shower. Uh, we will. They're, they're expecting about ten meteors per hour. There's a nearly new, new moon, which means the viewing should be good throughout the night. And the best feeling for this meteor shower is in the early evening, unlike other meteor showers, but it's better after midnight, noon, midnight and dawn. So, hope for good weather.
Okay, we will.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Uh, Joe, is this hand up for public appearances or is that leftover from the?
No, no, it's, it's, uh.
It's a new hand?
That one was lowered, Mayor Furman. Thank you.
Sorry. I just keep that when pictures are moving around for some reason.
I know. It's, you know, we, we've never gotten used to Zoom, have we? Um, just, just a, a, a quick shout out. Kudos to the town crew for its fine work in, um, cleaning up town streets last month after one of the, um. Particularly intense thunderstorms that, that swept through here. I don't remember the date. There were so many thunderstorms in August, but, uh. It was the one with high winds and, and it just left, uh, tree debris all over town streets. And I thought that they cleaned it up real quickly and, and, uh, in exemplary fashion. So kudos to them.
Thank you.
And also, um, uh, the Moheran tree crew, uh, did some pretty good work on a town tree in front of our house on Frederick Place. And, uh, they too cleaned up pretty quickly and, and, and well. Uh, I was just a little concerned that it took about six weeks. From the time I brought this to the town's attention until the Moheran crew was there to do some dead wood trimming of that tree and, um. It, it just wasn't, that, that kind of gap in time wasn't, wasn't, uh, common when David Gregg had the town. Uh, contract, town tree contract. I was just wondering what, what might be done to speed things up, uh, i- if that's even possible with, with Moheran. Because I know, you know, there's, there's probably some intermediaries that have to be worked through there, but, uh, just struck me as six weeks being a pretty long time for that. So that's a question.
Matt, do you want to take that?
Sure. Uh, we were very lucky. Uh, David Gregg worked exclusively for the town, uh, with, you know, working with Garrett Park occasionally. The last fifteen or twenty years and we're just not going to find that with another contractor. So.
Okay. Well, my point is it just seems like six weeks was, was a pretty long interval to, to get dead wood out of a town tree, but, uh.
Well, as you mentioned, there have been a lot of storms and I think those storms took priority over a few limbs. So I think you can.
Yeah, I will. I mean, I've, because I've reported a few trees as well to the town, um.
Well, Moheran wasn't out there cleaning the streets, Mayor Furman. This was a whole nother matter.
Trees down, trees that came down that have to be taken away.
I understand. I, I hear you, but, uh, it's, 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 it's really, that, that cleanup was more of a town crew matter than. Anything.
Connor, did you want to finish your?
No, I, I, no, I was just going to say, I, you know, I've been working with Matt on a few trees down on the north side as well and, um, you know. Talking with Matt and Moheran about it, it's, you know, there were other trees that were down that were blocking roadways that were. On top of cars. We had one on the north side. I mean, the ones that were, um, you know. Life or limb or onto damaging property, I, I, I gotta say, I was impressed that they were done within, you know, hours, uh, same day. Um, but, you know, the ones that are just down in people's backyards, uh, along public right of ways, they'll get there. So I think the thing that I was surprised to, to Joe, your comment is just, wow, uh, we've had. A number of weather issues in just August that, you know, trees I thought were looking healthy. Proved me wrong.
Uh, were these, were these town trees?
Uh, yes.
They must have been.
Yep. There was one big one on St. Paul that was in the right of way by, uh, by the fire hydrant that came down right across St. Paul. Actually, uh, about twenty minutes after our council meeting ended, or it was one of our special sessions ended, uh, last month. Um, because my friendly neighbors on the north side were shooting me pictures of like. The street, you know, they just heard a crash and a bang and it was something spectacular and it came down right in the middle of St. Paul Street. Actually, it was a dual limb tree. I don't know what the proper term is. It split right down the middle. One half fell in. The other half started to lean over DuPont, um, and they were able to come in and remove the whole tree because of safety fairly quickly.
That, uh, that, that, that kind of speaks to a, uh, suggestion I've made at a couple of council meetings this summer that, um. A, an inventory of town trees and their condition be, be undertaken. I realize this is not something to be done in a month or, or two, but, uh, nonetheless, the, the toppling of town trees in the summer is, has been. Numerous enough to, I think, underscore the importance of that kind of inventory to know what we're talking about and to know what trees might be really problematic, town trees, I did.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. Anything in the chat? Okay. All right. We'll move on to ordinance resolutions and regulations of which we have none tonight. And, um, council, is there any final words you would like to say before I ask for a motion to adjourn? Darren, unmute. You got to unmute?
I, I just want to get back to in-person meetings. Um, just before I make a motion to adjourn, I would just like to hope that. Um, by next month we have a, uh, an ordinance to introduce regarding the side yard setbacks.
Okay, is this specific, specifically on the windows or is this?
Well, it, 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 it would cover windows, but it will base, the, what I have, uh, submitted as a proposal would, would, uh, encompass all. Intrusions into the side yard setback, including bay windows. And then from that menu of options, you know, if, if we want to depart from the county, we can, but I, I just want to. A, a sort of the broadest possible proposal in front of us.
Okay.
And at this point, it's not introduced. I'm just saying, you know, we don't have any ordinances to consider this month. Maybe next month we can introduce one.
That sounds good. Right. Um, I think Sue Ellen was planning on that, wasn't she?
I think so.
Matt? She's got a lot to do, so.
Yeah, well, um, we'll, we'll see if we can push her to get the ordinance for introduction in October, so.
Okay. And speaking of October meetings, because of the, uh, Columbus Day holiday. Our next meeting will be the third Monday of the month, the eighth. So, um, that will be our, our next meeting.
And Mayor, uh, we'll also have someone from the county executive's office, um, to discuss the, um, county executive's climate action plan. And, uh, I believe Councilmember Engel has confirmed with Sandra Brecker.
Yeah, from Montgomery County Department of Transportation to talk about, uh, the capital bike share program and micro mobility, uh, options. An update from them on that.
So we'll have two guests that night. Okay, so that'll, uh, we'll probably, and then some other introductions, which doesn't take long and possibly, uh. Some resolutions. So we'll have, um, we'll have a long, a longer meeting. So just be prepared. So anyway, okay. Well, is there a motion to adjourn? Oh, sorry.
More, uh, just, uh, food truck night is this Thursday.
Oh, that's right.
Uh, so, um, weather looks like it's going to be great. So hopefully, you know, good chance to be outside and seeing neighbors.
And there's only one more after that. The last one is in October. So if you haven't been, uh, you'll have one more in October. Okay, good. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much.
Have a good night, everybody.
Night.